Uh, Jerry, um, Jackie, you want to sit in for Jerry?
Sure.
All right. I wasn't here last week, so I don't want to...
Last week it was Jackie and Mike.
Oh, okay, so we'll let Bruce sit in tonight. That'd be fair. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it.
Don't you need two people?
Uh...
Jerry and Dave?
Yeah. Point everybody.
Yes, everybody. Sorry.
Okay.
All right. Great. All right, so first order of business is a public hearing on application number 15-40 of Alexandra Castanzo, owner, for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C. Dot 1 of the Town of Sims Ferry zoning regulations for home occupation consisting of a salon on the property located at 16 West Point Terrace. All right, is the applicant here or want to make a presentation?
That's me.
Great. If you would, do we have a microphone? How are we doing this now, Jeremy? Right there? All right.
Mr. Chairman, applicant is more than welcome to sit at the table.
Okay.
You would like her at the podium.
Wherever the microphone is where it's best for TV.
The table feels less intimidating.
That's fine. Yeah, we are, we are auspicious group, I know that.
Okay, so is this where I present or I...
Yes, if you can, just briefly ask what your...
Okay, so I would like to...
Who are you working with first?
Yeah.
Oh, Alexandra Castanzo of 16 West Point Terrace. I currently am a hairstylist at a business in town on Hot Metal Street. I've had my license for four years and I've been building clientele over the last four years and currently just feel like creating a small little space in my home is just the next financial decision for me at this point in my life. I'm a mom of one and another one on the way and my husband is the main provider in our household, but I do work two to three days a week. So I'm really just looking to, these are financial costs in having my business. I pay a substantial amount to rent a chair at a salon in town and I'm hoping to just cut back costs, really. I don't plan on having signage in front of our home. I don't want new, new clients coming that are just knocking on my door looking for a haircut. I have a clientele base and I plan on just sustaining that clientele base and possibly gaining referrals along the way through people that are already known to myself.
What about parking?
Parking, I have a double wide driveway. I don't know the dimensions. I know that it's on, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared with the dimensions.
That's all right.
My driveway, but...
But it would be off the street though?
It's 20 feet wide and 60 feet long, so you could fit two cars side by side in your driveway?
Yep, yep, side by side and at least two or three deep, but I plan on allowing my scheduling, allotting like five to 10 minutes in between each client to allow for one to leave before the other comes.
Okay. And does it matter if she has a separate entrance or not? Not, not required?
I do have a separate entrance, just...
For, for that?
Yep, it's going to be a separate entrance.
All right. And what, are there any particular things we should be thinking about as we look at this?
Just, Mr. Chairman, under your special exception, coming to the conclusion that harmonizes with the neighborhood, that it doesn't do one, do burden to the neighborhood. I mean, reviewing the applicant's information, she's proposing no signage, she's only proposing one chair, no employees, and the hours are limited. If you look at the memo you received from Mike, there were five items that we would recommend you would put in any favorable motion, and I would add a six, that no signage is put on the property based on testimony received from the applicant, but that would be part of the application. Again, it's less than 400 square feet, it's one chair for the owner of the property, there's no, no proposed retail, that there's no outside storage, and there are no commercial vehicles. Again, we would like businesses to be successful, but as they become more successful, they still should be held to their original conditions of their permit as you reviewed it and potentially as you acted on it.
All right. And the, anything else you want to say on your own behalf?
Can I just ask a couple of questions regarding some of the conditions?
Yeah.
Can I ask the reasoning behind the retail sale? No retail sale.
Under your regulations, it's a home occupation, it's not allowed that.
So if she were to sell shampoo to somebody who got their hair done there, would that...
That would be at the discretion of the commission, but, you know, is, is retail sales generally a use of residential property? Again, in municipalities I've worked for before, you may come to a different answer if you limited that space.
It's ancillary to the main business, though. I mean, just as easily she, the applicant could have brochures sitting out and saying, "Well, I could order that for you," which she could order it to her home and then give it to her the next time that she was there. It's, I, I don't know...
As long as you feel it's ancillary, not...
Not the fundamental business.
I have enough provision with regards to retail that it's not somewhere that someone would go to purchase a product. It's only as Mr. Peterson has said, that it's ancillary to the hair salon, so someone there may buy a shampoo or a conditioner, but in your normal day of course of business or day, oh, I'm not going to stop at this, I forgot shampoo, I'll go there.
Right, and there's no signage, so only your clients know that.
Right.
So how would you rephrase the condition?
Right.
If you could give me a moment?
So let's go back to you for whatever, you had other questions?
That was my one question. It is, it is, I just, a lot of my clients do request like a shampoo, but it would not be that they'd be stopping by for the retail product, just be in addition to their services. And that, that is, you know, if that is the condition that you guys do not approve, you folks do not approve, I would, I would accept, however, that is quite a lot of, like, I earn a lot of money through my retail sale and that would be quite a hit to my business if I was not allowed to do that. But, and the other question is the hours.
I agree.
Again, I would abide if you guys said no to furthering the hours a little bit Monday through Friday, the 6:00 PM is a tad early, only because some of my clients work till 5:00. The latest I ever have anybody leave my salon currently is 8:00. I might be able to limit it to 7:00, but 8:00 is, is a request that I may ask for to make in that. And currently I only work two weekdays a week and I don't plan on adding anymore. So, so it'd be two nights a week till 8:00.
Just want to go back to the retail sales, just so we're all clear. Will you have standing, for lack of a better word?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I may be able to resolve that question, that the retail display be limited to an area of 10 square feet, which is the floor space of the table that the applicant is sitting.
Oh, yeah, I just plan on having like a little, a bookshelf.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And just to the commission, I would say, you know, 8 to 8 is, I think, okay for me, given that it's not client after client.
Right, it would only be one at a time.
Right.
So our concern would be for your neighbors.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I understand.
And so I understand why the 6:00 PM, I could be amenable to 7:00 or 8:00 PM.
All right. Any other questions for the commission from the applicant?
Um, no.
Any other questions from the commission to the applicant?
I'm just curious to see if you've talked with any of your neighbors about...
Yeah, I was just, well, we're going to have, it is a public hearing and I was going to say, they ever...
Well, they're here.
Yeah, I know. That's a fair question, Bruce, go ahead.
I have talked to a few of my neighbors, yep. I've talked to one of the neighbors off to the right of us and a couple of the neighbors in the neighborhood have stopped by when walking their dogs and asked us what the sign out in front of the house is for and I haven't gotten any, I don't know if there's any, that's another question I have, if there's any negative feedback or disapprovals.
We have a list of these all butters.
These are the butters were notified, but none of them chose to come tonight.
Oh, okay.
You had no other correspondence to the staff's office from any of the butters?
And just a point of clarification, in your current business environment, you're not selling retail to walk-ins. I realize it's somebody else's shop, you're just doing one chair, but the sales in that shop are, how does that work? You're getting a commission off stuff that goes out to your clients?
Typically in a salon, that's how it works. Currently in my situation, I, I do not make any commission off retail, just the way that she has it set up, that's her deal and I don't currently make any commission off.
What, what did your material say, three or, was it, in the, the number of clients per day that you're envisioning?
Yep.
Was it three or four? Is that what I remember, or was it a bigger number?
Um, on the, on average, it's about three to six clients.
Three, six.
Yep.
I'm wondering, I don't see in terms of the conditions that were drafted for our consideration, which you haven't seen yet, but there's, doesn't seem to be any limitation to the one chair. And so, you know, I understand that you don't, it's your intention to have one chair.
It's in there, it's the first condition.
First condition.
And she has a...
Oh, one chair, it's right in the first line, okay.
Yeah, it's just for me myself. I don't plan on being a, a business owner or a boss to anybody else but myself.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fine, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just with regards to hours of operation, we looked at limiting hours of operation versus number of people per day. That's something that's very troublesome to police, but I have seen commissions before that put language in the approval that, you know, usual average, no more than 10 clients a day or five clients a day. We have testimony tonight that it's between three and six. I don't know if the commission would want to contemplate a number, but again, hours of operation, if someone's successful, please understand that if all of a sudden there were home occupations run with the property, it will be sold as, it could be sold as a business with an approved hair salon. Someone else could operate it in a different manner, those hours of operation would be the limiting factor as to how many people could go in and out the door versus limiting the clientele. It is difficult to enforce, though. It's easy to say, hey, you were open at 8:30, you were supposed to be closed at 8:00. It's difficult to police you had six and you were only supposed to have five. You know, literally you had to stay there all day.
So it runs, it runs with the property and the new property owner doesn't have to come back in regardless of what the business is?
If it's a home occupation for a hair salon, operating under the same parameters of permits run with property, not with...
But it would, it would be limited to a hair salon, correct?
Limited to a hair salon, one chair, no employees, retail sale limited to 10 square feet.
I mean, the only thing I would say is, is that if, for example, a bridal party came in with 10 or 12 people at the same time, they're all technically clients, it would be probably a one, you know, very limited number of times you did that, but I'm just trying to think of, you know, I, I wouldn't want to limit her ability. The reality is, you can still only do one person at a time.
Right.
Because you only have one chair, so, I don't know.
And just to be clear, that, the, running with the property, if there is a period where an owner doesn't exercise the right to have the salon, that doesn't extinguish the use for a successor, successor owner?
Correct. It has to be proof of, proof of abandonment, not a ten, proof.
But they, they could also apply, again, to have it be part of the home, not a business, for whatever reason.
Correct. Usually it's for tax purposes.
That's what, for whatever reason.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone here in the public to speak for or against this project? Hearing none, I would be looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Some move.
Seconded by Mr. Elliott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Our, so now, so we haven't approved or acted on your application, we've had the public hearing. But the next item of business is discussable and possible action on application 15-40.
Okay, provision, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So based on the discussion during the public hearing, I would be, we, the, if there was someone interested in moving approval, the suggested conditions of approval would be the following, that the home occupation is limited to one chair salon for the owner of the property, not to exceed 400 square feet, as shown on the sketch plan, no additional employees are permitted, retails, sales are limited to an area of 10 square feet, should be no outside storage materials associated with home occupation, there are no commercial vehicles stored and/or housed on the site as part of the home occupation, that the hours of the business be conducted between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM Monday through Friday, and 10:00 and 4:00 PM Saturday and Sunday, and that no signage per the application. So I'd be looking for a motion.
I'll move the approval with these conditions of approval.
And a second?
A second.
Seconded by Donna. Any further discussion?
My only concern, I guess, is still the, the 8 to 8 timeframe. My concern is for the neighbors and I understand she's not going to, but again, this runs with the property. That's my concern. So she might only be working three days a week and some of those people who do want to come at 5:00, okay, and some of them could probably come on Saturday or Sunday if they're later in the day. Just something to think about.
Well, at this point, it's been moved and seconded, so your choices are to vote for or against, having expressed your issues. I think the proposal is as presented, 8 to 8.
It is.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously, all right?
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Don't sell the house to somebody that's going to be there working every day.
We don't plan on selling it.
Just as an aside, when we look at, expected we, when we look at the zoning regulations, it's not clear to me why special exceptions need to stay with the property of this type. It just seems, doesn't seem totally intuitive to me that that's true. Now, if someone wants to buy the property because it has a business in it, they certainly could apply for a special exception when they buy a house, but we have this issue on other properties too, but I'm, I'm not sure, is that universally true throughout real estate and...
Typically, Mr. Chairman, all land use applications and approvals run with the property. There's some discussion, probably some case law out there, with regards to excavations, that you may be able to limit the, an excavation to an operator or the permit deed and then require someone, when that transfers, to come back in. It's something we can look at as we go through the, our evaluation of the regulations.
Just curious.
Are they trumped by state?
Some of that would be considered contract zoning, which is illegal in Connecticut, that you're in essence writing a contract for a particular property based on the...
Well, I, again, I practice law without a license a lot, but the, the idea of a special permit sounds like exactly that to me, special permit to use doesn't mean that it's forever more.
Point taken, Mr. Chairman.
Do I need a, do I need proof of any, do I need a revised?
It's all on public record, yeah. You're all set, you can go.
Go forth.
Yeah.
But you get a letter from the state, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you folks for your...
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
All right, next up, continued from 12/7/2015, application number 15-37, Stephen Walker, GPF Drake Hill LLC, owner for a site plan amendment on the property located at 710 Hot Metal Street.
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding at the request of Mr. Walker and based on information discussed two weeks ago, that this agenda item was tabled to your January meeting to give Mr. Walker an opportunity to submit different signage along Route 10. However, I do believe that the gentleman who is a tenant on that property is here, under your sign codes, when you're, there were probably three things associated with this. There were new street signs as well as a sign internal to the property. The changes to the street signs changed the unified signing program, which required the special exception. And again, it was tabled based on my understanding until January.
So the applicant is really Mr. Walker and he's not here?
The applicant is Mr. Walker.
And he was informed it's in January?
Correct.
Yeah. So it'd be appropriate to do the whole thing at that time, I think. Don't you agree?
Yes.
All right. Okay.
The design review board is already opined on the side, the dimensions of the side.
Design review did review it, they had, they rendered a positive referral to the commission, but again, it is within your discretion to review that for consistency with your regulations and the Sims Ferry Design Agreement.
Right.
Now, there was also some discussion about LEDs and how we don't have anything currently in our signage regs regarding LEDs.
And also the present signage package, you have a requirement on all ground signs to provide landscaping associated with that, and the present proposal did not have landscaping, and Mr. Walker was going to, he was also going to look at size and color schemes associated with, designer review mentioned the fact that the street address was on the base, so if we have any typical snow events that we'd experience in New England, you would lose the street address on the base for three to four months throughout the winter. They were very low on that.
Did the chief of police or fire opine on that? Usually the fire department has to be able to identify address number. I don't know if there's any discussion.
Again, I do not have correspondence from either one of those two entities.
We talked about it as, as a board, we did mention that too, as of where it was.
We, we will check on that. I would encourage the commission members, though, to look closely at what's being proposed, what's traditionally existed among that corridor, and what that sign may look more like in other areas such as Bloomfield, Manchester, Berlin Turnpike.
Well, I didn't think it was that bad. I just give consideration also to what is currently there, which is no great shakes itself. Yeah, about eight feet tall is, is a tall monument.
I did have discussions with Mr. Walker regarding scale as it relates to the corridor.
All right. It's a good thing we're not talking about this tonight. All right?
Thank you.
So that will be continued again till the January, whatever, 4th meeting. Thank you for coming anyway, Bill. General commission business, discussion of new and ongoing projects from the staff?
What would you like to know about?
The big Y that you're not supposed to talk about.
There are no ongoing discussions with, with big Y associated with the development of their property presently before staff in our department. So again, we're, we're waiting to see what they're intending to do. Again, staff has met with a few potential developers and landowners along the Route 10 corridor, and I don't want to say being general with that, you know, 1,000 feet east of that and 1,000 feet west of that. But again, a lot of it is, is the integration of how things correlate with the design district and how you interpret those regulations and how dense you can get. The other thing we do have coming up next week, we do have a pre-construction meeting with Garden Homes.
Which is that, that's the CLP property?
CLP property, so they intend to, we'll know more in a week, but our understanding is that they may break ground just after the New Year.
All right. What's the status of the Hartford property?
I have not been made aware of the final transaction of that property.
So there's a letter of intent, but the property is not transferred?
I'm not aware of a transfer. We're pushing up against this calendar year, but I'm not sure what fiscal year the Hartford runs on or any other entity involved.
And they moved a lot of earth on the Powder Forest apartment, townhome. They actually put foundations in yet? I haven't been in there in a while.
There are two buildings, foundations in and, I'm sorry, three, including the clubhouse, and they were setting footings for two others in the rear, but they should have, they'll probably have two framed this winter along with the clubhouse. They're moving along out there.
Weather's helped, I'm sure.
Yes.
And I'm meeting tomorrow with Glenn Chalder from Planometrics to discuss potential scope for the regulations.
Good.
And budget, which then I have to have discussions with finance and the selectmen's office on that budget amount.
All right. Good. Any other questions for staff?
Is there something you wanted to mention about the commission educational structure?
Internally, we are working on worksheets for both planning, zoning, ZVA, and conservation. Once we're done with those internally, I was going to vet them with council, and we're working on dates in January. Kind of two things I've discussed with other commissions, giving the fact you may have light agendas, that it may be viable to have the workshop session at a regular meeting versus an extra night. I'm sure everybody has busy schedules, but typically January and February, my experience, are light permitting months where we could potentially do commission business at one of the biannual monthly meetings and potentially have the workshop scheduled for the second one. I would like to do it at your second meeting, potentially in January, as a target. Again, any new members, please reach out to me prior to that if we can meet sooner to go over some policies and...
Do we have the second January one? I don't think we could do this.
We may have, but no.
That's why it's late.
Sorry.
Yeah, because there's, nothing could get done.
What is...
There's only one meeting in January.
Yeah. If you had to do a second meeting in January, would that be a good or bad thing? Just as a workshop session?
There's another Monday, there's the 25th, so we could potentially do that.
They just wouldn't want it to coincide with, oh wait, it's January, not February.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that's fine with me.
Yep.
Special meeting.
Within one agenda item workshop?
Sure.
As good as your responsibilities of zoning commissions.
Sure.
And in that discussion on roles and responsibilities of zoning commission, we also want to talk about roles and responsibilities of the zoning board of appeals, which is an extension of the zoning commission and has to evaluate unique hardships, and I think that discussion, at least with you and them, needs to be had.
And the intention is to have counsel there as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, that's great.
So I could walk through the chair on trying to schedule that?
Yeah.
All right, last item of business is approval of minutes for December 7th. Do you have any comments?
I, I just one, I wanted to, see it in all this paper, but the reference, there's sort of a quote from you, Jamie, about whether there's things that you could report on, and I thought that the phrasing of it was backwards, that there was nothing that... the phrasing of it was backwards, that there was nothing that you could report on, rather than that there's no report that you could make on things that are going on, as in.
Okay. Without reviewing the tape on it, and my recollection is, I really had nothing to report at this time.
That's what I thought you said. Okay, all right.
Do you know where that is?
Well, 126. Well, actually, it does, it is out, it says, Mr. Rabbitt had also said there are updates pertaining to Big Y that he cannot report on at this time. So, well, there are updates that he couldn't tell us, or there was nothing to update.
Is that a question?
I don't know. That's what Ross was saying.
The minute are a reflection of what I actually said, so without reviewing the tape, if you were uncomfortable with that wording, there was nothing.
I thought what you meant was there was no update to offer on the Big Y project.
That was today. He just said, he just said.
No, he said that, you know, a month ago, or two weeks ago.
Oh, he did.
There was nothing to offer that he was aware of.
So this implies there were updates you could not reveal.
That's why I said what I said.
And so, Mr. Rabbis asking that the minutes stand as presented?
Without.
Is that accurate?
Without review of the tape.
Let's move on.
Really? All right. I would just like to clarify, if there is information that is out there that you are unable, that you were unable to share with the commission without disclosing it, is there?
On the Big Y project?
Yes.
Not at this time.
So the minutes for the December 21st meeting will be clear on that point. All right, good.
Rob, I just had a question.
Yeah, please.
At the last meeting, you talked about moratoriums. Is there any update on a moratorium for?
The, you will have an application before you for the workforce housing zone, moratorium with a tenant, with a public hearing scheduled for January 4th, and those notices went out and the application is filed.
So we can't have a moratorium?
You, we, I've always been advised, we submitted an application as a permission to yourselves to have a moratorium on the workforce housing zone for 12 months. You're required to have a public hearing.
Right.
Open, close, and make a decision.
Right.
All of that is in works.
Okay.
You have a live application before you.
So our conversation was about taking the same step for the PAD at the first January meeting?
PAD, I have been working on that language, but I haven't been able to vet it with council.
Is that likely to happen for the first, the January, the January 4th meeting?
We would bring potential language to you in January.
Great. Fine, thank you.
When was the recommendation made, or applicant, application made for the PAD language?
There was no application for PAD language. There was only an application for the workforce housing.
And neither of those would have an outside sponsor, they would both come from the commission, from the staff, or from the commission to the commission?
From the commission to the commission.
Right, so they're text amendments, Rob. That's, we got that from Jamie two weeks ago.
Yeah, just.
A moratorium language is a text amendment.
A moratorium language actually gets inserted into your regulations as text, so it's a new section.
All right, so just to be clear, there is, there was discussion at the special meeting?
To authorize staff to submit an application on the.
For the work.
The 12-month moratorium.
Right, okay. There has, has there been any discussion?
That was not a special meeting. That was just the December 7th zoning meeting.
No. Oh, all right. Well, we also discussed it at the special meeting where we voted on climax and.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, of the previous commission. Has there been a similar recommendation that, for the PAD?
There was a recommendation two weeks ago for staff to work on language for PAD moratorium.
That was made by the commission.
By the commission.
Oh, was it?
I'm gonna be a bit of a pain here. So that, was that a motion by the commission to?
To.
Ask for the moratorium?
Asked staff to prepare draft language.
Is that in the minutes?
It was not a.
It was a motion.
It would?
My recollection, Mr. Chairman, was it was not a directive for the staff to apply at this time.
Okay.
But only to prepare language for the commission's review.
All right, good.
It's on line 111 of the minutes of the last meeting.
So the public hearing for?
Commission agreed, and it's also requested a town staff draft the PAD moratorium for December 7th.
Requested, but it wasn't voted on.
Correct. It says, requested to have town staff.
It doesn't refer to a motion made second.
All right.
So January 4th would be the public hearing for the workforce housing?
Correct.
Awesome.
Any other business?
We need to approve the minutes then.
Yeah.
So I guess a motion to approve the minutes.
Yeah.
Since we're in here.
Don't they just submit, do we have to actually vote on this?
Well, in the past, we have just adopted the minutes after discussion of any material changes, so we have not been taking formal motions and seconds for the approval of minutes. We've adopted the minutes as, after discussions of material errors.
And that's for all board of commissioners?
Yeah.
So you can just do that?
Yeah, so the minutes are approved as submitted.
Yeah.
And Dave's not here to make a motion for adjournment.
Nice guy.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.